I'll call the committee, the whole of the Taunton School Committee Wednesday, November 17th to order. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Here.
Mr. Fiori?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Martin Sampson and David Souza, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. I'm present. And I'd just like to welcome everyone. And we are here this evening to interview the candidate for the position of Director of Special Education. And right now, I'd like to turn it over to the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. John Cabral, for an opening statement.
Thank you, Chairman Souza. Good evening. All organizations, public, private, nonprofit, to name a few, grapple with staff departures and staff replacement. It is understood that when an employee with years of service relocates, retires, or takes another position in another organization, it is bound to create uncertainty, some discomfort, and a fair measure of anticipation. In the case of the Taunton Public Schools, for a number of years, we have endeavored to foster upward mobility among our staff, first and foremost, the benefit of our students, additionally to sustain the momentum and attainment of the district's goals, and to nurture the value of professional growth. The Taunton Public Schools prides itself on a relatively stable staff that allows the district to continue forward movement without a number of starts and stops. While this has been a goal that has been achieved in a large number of instances, there have been times when new personnel have been welcomed into our community of learners. The process of seeking the best fit and the best candidate for all positions, but particularly for positions of leadership, involves recruitment and review conducted with the participation of staff, parents, and family members in the community at large. Care is taken to carefully and thoughtfully consider the merits of each applicant, their strengths, and their likely contribution to the position that they are seeking. The seriousness of my recommendations is not lost on me, and I am aware that many of my decisions as superintendent will be well received and some will not be well received. However, I take the necessary time and reflection to make certain that the children and their welfare remains a chief priority. At this time, I would like to invite the School Committee Chair, David Souza, to introduce the candidate that I am recommending for the position of Director of Special Education, Ms. Amy Monahan.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. I'd like to invite Amy to the, Amy to welcome Amy and to welcome her and to have a seat at the table that we provided for you. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. I have had the distinct pleasure of serving on this school committee for a number of years and have witnessed firsthand the arduous process of identifying qualified staff to work on behalf of our students. While each public school district is challenged by the same task, Taunton is diligent, focused, and committed to providing our students with personnel who care deeply about children and their welfare, demonstrate a grasp of knowledge associated with their position to which they have applied and are willing to roll up their sleeves to get the job done. This particular personnel search has not been, has nothing different than that. We have met and chatted with a comrade of qualified persons interested in working with our students. Mr. Cabral has spent time considering the person whom he believes would be the best to meet the district and student needs. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Cabral's recommendation for the next Director of Special Education, Ms. Amy Monahan. Amy, it's my delight to invite you and make it, to make an opening statement, which will be followed by a few questions from my colleagues in the school committee. Amy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'm very excited to be here and I'm very appreciative of this opportunity. And I do understand the importance of this position and the value of...
You can unmask. You can unmask. That's fine.
And the value of our students in the Taunton Public Schools. So, my name is Amy Monahan. I'm originally from New Bedford. I'm a daughter of an immigrant from Portugal. I think that is where I get my work ethic from, from my dad. He's been a hard worker, provided for my brother and I to make sure we had every educational opportunity for us that he was not afforded. I grew up in a bilingual home. Unfortunately, I was not brought up to speak another language. That was the sign of the times because my parents were concerned about challenges my brother and I might face in education if we spoke a different language. With that being said, growing up in New Bedford, I certainly understand the challenges and the celebrations of a urban district. I'm proud of where I came from, and I'm proud that Taunton resembles, and I've spent my life here, almost my adult life here. I have two children that went through the Taunton Public Schools, both of them, one is currently in college, one has graduated from college. That's a tribute to the dedication that the staff, the superintendent, school committee has had to our students. I've lived in Taunton for 28 years. I've been in education for 30. 25 of those years are right here. I started off as a special education teacher at the Martin Middle School, and then I was afforded the opportunity to be a special ed coordinator for the last 13 years. I am also a visiting senior instructor at Bridgewater State University. There, I get to work with future teachers and future administrators. It is a privilege to do that. It is a great networking opportunity for myself also. Several of teachers that have been employed through Taunton Public Schools have come through Bridgewater State University. But for fun, I enjoy cooking and watching baseball, which my son plays, listening to and watching videos my daughter produces, and taking hikes with my husband and my German shepherd. And again, I really thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. I'll start to my right. First question, Mrs. Fagan.
Yes. Welcome. What are some of your long-range and short-range goals and objectives? And along those lines, is there anything that you feel that we need to address as far as special ed that's most important to you that needs to be addressed? Thank you.
So, short-range goals and objectives. If I was to be appointed to this position, even though I've been here for many years and I have a good read on culture and climate and the needs of the district, I would need to reintroduce myself to people as the Director of Special Ed because that is a different role than I've been in previously. And with that becomes different perspectives and responsibilities. So, short-term, I would want to make sure I'm getting out to the schools, sitting with the principals, sitting with staff, special education staff, general education teachers, meeting with CPAC, meeting with any other parent, to really listen and hear what is important to them. I might think I know, but I don't know until I know. Long-range is just to continue the growth in building capacity of our district, and that includes everyone that works with our students with disabilities and without disabilities. Students enter Taunton Public Schools through early intervention. That's when they first are identified, at three years old. And some students' journey in special education is short, and some is until they reach the age of 22. So, I want to continue to look at our programs and work to enhance them and grow because we can always grow. Things are changing. New methodologies are developed, new curriculum is developed, and I just want to make sure that everyone that works with our students have the capacity to work and do what needs to be done for them. Some of the more immediate things, I think, other immediate things I think we should look at is we've invested in co-teaching in our inclusion model, and that has been a great success for our students with disabilities and our students who are not disabled. But we've had a lot of new staff, a lot of things have changed, and it's always good to go back and rebuild on those foundational skills and, you know, do it again. So, I think that's a priority. That also from conversations with principals and teachers, you know, that's something that they're constantly seeking out more professional development on. And again, it's ongoing learning. The other things, you know, obviously with the pandemic, where, you know, we're still coming through the pandemic, and that has some unfortunate consequences for all students. But there are also some other consequences for our students with disabilities because where they already had gaps, those gaps have probably come wider. So, it's important to do that work. So, currently, I work with the state and some other administrators in this district with the Learning Acceleration Network. And there, we're working on strategies and how we can support teachers and our students with the accelerated roadmap that DESI had put out. So, that becomes very important because we have to move on, right? The kids, so if we think about it, our fifth graders, current fifth graders, the last time they were in normal school was when they were in third grade. Those are some pretty powerful years that they've missed emotionally and socially. And that's for all students. Never mind if a student has a learning issue or another disability that impacts them from accessing the curriculum. So, it's really important to figure out how to keep moving them forward, but fill in those gaps as we go. Sorry. And we need to think about other training. We have a lot of new curriculum in the district, and it is challenging for all the teachers to learn that curriculum and to support them, but also to support our special educators in learning how to adapt and modify that curriculum so our students have access to the general curriculum. So, those are more immediate things that we need to work on as a result of COVID especially. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Fiori?
How are you, Amy? Nice to see you again. What do you see as the major challenges or issues facing students today, in particularly, particular students with special needs?
So, for all students, I think just getting back into school and the social and emotional piece for our students. For students with disabilities, those challenges vary. It's hard to say for sure because their individual needs are just that individual. So, some challenges for some students may not be other challenges. But I think it's all about access and being included as much as they can because that is hard for some of our students. It's hard for them to be included socially, to participate in social things. Sometimes I have to check myself, especially when I'm speaking with parents. Sometimes parents don't get to celebrate their children like a typical family would. So, their child's art may never be in an art show, or they may never make that cross-country team and run that best time, or they may not get to rank high in their class rank for high school. So, I think those challenges, and not to say that those are realistic goals for kids, but looking for ways to celebrate them for what their strengths are. Because our students with disabilities do a lot of great things. We just came off our Unified Sports basketball team. It's an amazing, amazing thing that happens for our students with disabilities because it's inclusive. So, we have non-disabled peers participate with our students with disabilities. This year, we were able to tweet that out. So, we got to, like, celebrate that. And parents were happy about that because they got to, their kids were tweeted. You know, their picture was out there. They were, they were celebrated for scoring that basket. And our general ed kids or our non-disabled peers that get to work with our students, their bucket is also being filled because they are sharing themselves with them and they're learning about a student with disabilities and how they can interact with them. So, those are some of those challenges or barriers. I like to think of them like just that we just need to move out of the way for our students with disabilities.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, nice to see you again. So, you know, as a member of the school committee, we get a lot of parents reaching out to us. As you can imagine, it's not often, hey, everything's great, we're all happy, good job, keep up the good work. Mostly, it's people in distress, you know, looking to have their problems fixed. So, so there's, there's a lot of families in our district, and I'd say particularly families with children with special needs that have lost faith in Taunton Public Schools. So, if you were to be the Director of Special Education, what is something that you would do to try to restore the faith in some of these families that may have lost it?
So, I work with many, many families through the course of, even as a classroom teacher in the past 13 years, and I would like to say that everybody leaves a meeting with me happy. And they're not always happy. So, I understand that, and I can respect that because they're advocating for their I think if you were to ask most parents that I work with, even when they're not, when I'm not their favorite person, I am transparent, I am honest, and I'm open. And sometimes when we don't agree, it's usually about how we want to get somewhere. So, we all have, usually have the same goal for that student, but sometimes we disagree in how we're going to get there. But I have to, I'm understanding and sympathetic to their, their cause, right? Because this is their child, and their child has a need, and they see it one way. So, I try, we try, I try to come up with a way. I try to work with that family. Doesn't always go well. I'm not going to lie about that. But I'm always with the child in mind, in my mind. And it's not about money. It's not about being right or wrong. Sometimes I think families, teachers, staff, they get frustrated with special education. We are governed by rules and regulations and timelines, and sometimes those rules and regulations and timelines aren't either fast enough or flexible enough. But I always advise parents to follow the process. I will tell them how to file, do the process because the process is there to protect not only the children, but the families and the districts. And my experience is when we do follow the process, things kind of usually settle out. You know, it's, it's, it's like a win-win. So, it might not be exactly what a parent wants or exactly what the district wants, but it's something that everybody can be like, okay. In terms of, you know, restoring that trust, I'm just going to keep trying. I'm not going to give up because it's about the kids. And I might not make that parent, I might not ever make that parent happy, but I'm always going to be respectful and treat that parent with respect and that family with respect and still do what's right for that student.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Monahan, welcome. I don't have a prepared question, but I do have a statement or two I'd like to share with my colleagues. So, I was one of the two school committee members on the screening committee, as you know, and we had very impressive candidates, but you rose to the top. You were my first choice. I ranked, I think, top three, were my first choice because of a few reasons. One is this job or this post or this responsibility, there's no real room for learning. This is a hands-on position that I think is very important that someone like yourself, who's been in a role that you have been, is familiar with the families, is familiar with the district, and can really start day one. So, I'm very confident that you can do that job. That's one of my reasons. The next reason is that I like to look at recommendations from different folks that are presented for each candidate, and one is from Dr. Benny. For those that don't know, it's Dr. Akbara, but I call her Benny. And she leads off with academic excellence, leadership, and administrative experience. And I know as a colleague at Bridgewater State University that Dr. Benny is well-respected. She works with a great team. Dr. McManus is also on that team, who happens to be my squadron commander from the Civil Air Patrol, who I have a lot of respect for. And just leading off the letter recommendation with those three points, academic excellence, leadership, and administrative experience, is something that really reassures my pick and my selection in you. As Mr. Palowski alluded to, as a school committee member, one of the main concerns that I've had over the few years that I've been here has been special education. But as long as you can commit to open communication, open dialogue, transparency, we know we don't, you don't have all the answers. I don't have all the answers. Mr. Cabral doesn't have all the answers. But if we can work together as a team and you have support folks in position, in leadership, in the superintendent and school committee members, you're going to be successful. So, please don't shy away from asking for help. If you're not getting the answers, please reach out because we can help in a multitude of ways. Because the one thing I don't want to hear at the end of the day or at the end of the semester is we didn't have enough help to get this resolved because at that point, it's too late. We have resources. We can move around. We can make happen to support your role and those of your colleagues and to make sure that every student, every student, all 8,000 students, has the support mechanisms in place to succeed. And that's what we're here to do. So, for that reason, you rose to the top, and you're my choice, and good luck to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. Ms. Monahan, I have Mrs. Almeida. She's participating via remote technology, so I will be calling on her next. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we...
Sometimes with the...
...I've watched you over the years from the time you were in Gil Airings class over at Martin and going into...
I can go on to my question, but I'll just hold for a second. I'm not going to say we lost, we lose it?
Yeah, we're a little frozen right now.
All right. So, we're going to go back to Mrs. Almeida. So, Mike, I just have one question as, as the next person in line here, and that is when you're dealing with IEPs, you're dealing with the school staff in an IEP, you're dealing with the parents in an IEP, and sometimes you can't make everyone happy, and you have the law and you have the DESI regulations that you have to follow. And I think there's times when we get into a situation where someone wants A and you have to give them B because you have to follow the law. Could you explain that a little bit? Obviously, you know a thousand times more than I do about that. Could you just explain how that works and how you handle those types of situations?
So, whether whoever wants A and whoever wants B, it's, it's the team decision. It's the chair makes the final say. Sometimes I'm in that position as the administrator to make that decision. What I do when obviously someone is getting maybe what they want and someone maybe isn't, I just explain why, and I try to connect it with the regulations if that's applicable. If it's a parent, I always refer them to their procedural safeguards, which is, explains in writing their rights and how to, how to solve the problem or use the dispute mechanisms in place. For example, if, if we were talking about eligibility and a student was not eligible for special education because there was no identified disability at the time, the parent may not be in agreement with that. So, I will explain, you know, we will do our best to explain why, you know, reiterate what we use for our evaluation tools and why that doesn't show a disability. But at the end of the day, you know, we, we say, this is your dispute mechanism. You can do that, do A, B, C, and so I just try to explain it to the best that I can. Sometimes it requires a follow-up phone call because it is, it is, you know, I hear from parents, it feels, sometimes it can feel like a me against them or us against them kind of situation because they're just one, and they're not, they don't, they may not understand the process 100%. Meanwhile, they're surrounded by professionals that, it can be intimidating, right? It can be very intimidating to sit there and hear things, good, bad, indifferent things about their child, and they don't, they don't, they might not understand it. So, sometimes, you know, there's a phone call that happens, like a check-in, like, do you understand it? Do you have any other questions? Sometimes it's like, let's come back and meet. Let's talk about this again. I want to make sure you understand it. You know, we always tend to say, like, if you have any questions, come up. Don't hesitate to call. Don't hesitate to email. I know sometimes, you know, the CPAC has a great resource for our families too. So, sometimes, like, you know, you can contact your CPAC. They may have some other resources for you. Or, you know, they might not have qualified for something, but let's do this. Like, these are other things we can do instead of. Like, it doesn't have to be special ed, but maybe there's, you know, we can connect you with this agency, or we can do Title I services or things like that. And sometimes I can say that the other team members aren't happy with an outcome either. But that's just conversation with the team, the other, you know, the, the school team piece and explaining that and coming up with next steps. Did I answer that question okay?
Yeah. So, that's fine. So, the bottom, the, the, the bottom line is you do what's best for the, the best interest of the, of the child within the law, the regulations. Because you have to, you have to follow those.
Yes, yes. DESI, DESI is very, has shifted their focus also to student outcomes, and they really are focused, we're going through our tiered focus monitoring self-assessment right now. And they're really focused on before a student goes to testing for special education, what was everything done prior to that? So, you know, DESI is very conscientious about over-identification or under-identification too because that can be an issue. So, those whole interventions and general ed supports and things like that are, are important, and we need to make sure all our kids are doing, get, you know, if they need those supports, they have those supports. Luckily, I happen to work in a district that supports that, and school committee and the superintendent for years has supported all those things for kids because it is, it's all about the kids. And that's one of the things that really has kept me here this long because it's about the kids. And that's, you know, that's where it all starts from, so.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. I'm going to go back to my colleague, Mrs. Almeida, who's participating via remote technology. Mrs. Almeida, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead with your question, please.
Okay. I don't know how far I've got the last time.
Go ahead. You can start over.
All right. So, welcome. And I'm glad you're Mr. Cabral's choice for the Director of Special Ed. I know that I had the opportunity to be on the screening committee, and as Mr. DeMello said, you did rise to the top from the candidates on that committee. So, it goes to show that Taunton can homegrown their own. So, Amy, I know there's going to be a lot of things happening right now. So, in your opinion, what do you think makes a great special education director?
Thank you for those wonderful things. Well, I will make a great special education director. I am communicative with people. I feel I'm very transparent. A former superintendent tends to agree with my husband. I have no poker face. I care about kids. I care about our families. I know the law. I know, I know the process. I'm fair. I'm flexible. But, and, and I, and you, you, I think, Mr. DeMello... But, and, and I, and you, I think Mr. DeMello kind of said it, like, this is, this is, like, you got to hit the ground running. So, I am, a special ed director needs to be ready. They need to be aware of the culture and climate of the district they're in. They need to be aware of, you know, what, each school is different, even though we're one district. But within each, within the district, we are separate communities in terms of school, in terms of demographics, in terms of need. So, you need to be aware of that because it's not a one-size-fits-all. And our students deserve someone that is aware and can make good decisions, at least in, at least at the moment. And it's about the children and puts the children first and what they need. And can be collaborative with leadership, school committee, CPAC, parents, the community. And it doesn't mean it has to be smooth all the time. Someone who can have those difficult conversations, but problem-solve. I think. Me.
Okay. So, what has been the most difficult decision that you've ever had to make?
So, there's probably more than one. I think sometimes when. I think it's knowing when to, sometimes it's like more of a personal thing, knowing when to, it's not personal. Let's just make this work for the family or the student. You know, sometimes I think we're human. We might get caught up in our own or stubborn. So, I think sometimes that decision is difficult just to move on. I think difficult decisions I've had to make mostly have to do with staff and interventions with staff because our staff do work hard, but sometimes, you know, decisions, those tough decisions have to be made. You might have to make a recommendation or, you know, have an uncomfortable conversation with someone or, you know, even just changing a special education liaison because that, it's just not working with that family. They just need a fresh, different person. Not that someone lost their job, just they're going to have a different caseload or something like that. Those tend to be tough because they're uncomfortable for me because I value our, the people we work with. I know how hard they work. So, sometimes making those decisions around personnel is very challenging, I think.
Okay, thank you. I know one person would be very proud of you tonight, and that would be Father Monahan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Colleagues, I will open it up for any more questions. If anyone has an additional question, I'd be taken at this time. It doesn't necessarily have to be in order. Mrs. DeMello, then Mr. Palowski?
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions. I'd like to make a motion to recommend Ms. Monahan to be the special education director.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DeMello, seconded by Mrs. Fagan to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Ms. Monahan, the director of special education. On discussion, there's no discussion. Mrs. Fagan, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mrs. Almeida?
I will heartily vote yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes, Amy Monahan.
And Chairman Souza?
Yes, Amy Monahan. The motion carries, and we'll just reaffirm that during this, during the committee, the whole report at the regular meeting. If no further questions and no further business, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Before that?
So moved.
Did you have a question?
Congratulations, Amy.
I just wanted to make a comment. I want to congratulate you. I met you years ago at Martin School. I know you care deeply about the students, and I know you're going to do a good job. So, I'm glad you're a part of this team. Thank you so much and look forward to working with you. And you want me to, well, set with the, what do you need, your motion to adjourn this meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mrs. Fagan, seconded, the other motion. All is in favor.
Aye.
Oppose the ice hammer. Were adjourned?